Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 14th zoning board hearing. On the agenda tonight, we only have one hearing. Let me get right to the minutes of the last meeting first. I'm gonna need a motion and approval for the minutes from the November 9th meeting. I have a motion by John. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by John. Dagnes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chris?
I was not here last night.
Okay, one abstention, Chris isn't here. Okay. Thank you. You pass that down to... Melissa? Anybody have any conflicts tonight?
No.
Don't see anybody. Okay. We have a full five-member board. All right, this is a new application, even though we've been dealing with this before and modifications have been done to the plan. So I'll read it... I'll read the application notice. This is on the application, Nuria Energy DBA Golden Nozzle Cowwash 326 Clark Street, Worcester, for a special permit and/or amendment to an existing special permit in relation to a parcel of land owned by May Park Corporation, Leaven Aries Way in Milford, which parcel consists of 1.5 acres, more or less located on the Westerly intersection of Route 140 and Green Street. The special permit is sought to permit continued utilization of the property as a commercial car wash and to permit changes in layouts of the facilities on the property as shown on a plan submitted with the application. Concerning the application, do you have a motion to dispense, as long as it's the same?
I make a motion.
Motion to dispense with the reading of the application, as long as it's the like of what has been submitted. With that, all those in favor, second? John? John Dagnes, second. All those in favor? That's aye. With that, the town planner... Let me read into the record the town planner's comments. This is from the chairman of the planning board, Joe Caligione, and town planner Larry Duncan. The applicant requests amended site plan approval to allow for continued use of a commercial car wash on the subject promises. At their 14/23 meeting, the ZBA granted a temporary special permit with conditions to the new operator, and we have the attached decision here. That applicant now seeks to remedy all past violations by meeting the temporary special permit requirements and revising the site plan features to return to queuing lanes to an appropriate, safe configuration on the site. The original approved queuing lanes are being restored. Eight vacuum stations are being requested and relocated to the rear of the building, and a substantial area of excess paving at the rear of the site is to be removed and replaced with landscaping. In addition, two traffic control gates are gonna be installed at the head of the car wash queuing lanes, and two speed bumps are also gonna be installed near the southwest corner of the building to slow traffic from exiting the vacuum stations. Therefore, they recommended approval of the amended site plan subject to relevant agency comments. With that, I'll turn this over to Attorney Pettenary, who is the attorney for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and gentlemen of the board. I wanna make sure that we're clear in our presentation here. We were here in September, and in September, this board made substantial recommendations about the things that you just read through. And we have incorporated the recommendations that this board made in September into the amended site plan, which was approved by the planning board last month. The long and the short of this is, this has been a commercial car wash facility since 1984. It has been an auto, sales, service, and repair facility for more than 70 years. The issue that presented itself the last time we were here was that there had been certain changes made to the layout that hadn't been approved by this board, and there had not been an amendment of the underlying necessary special permit. We made the presentation to the planning board last month. Their questions were all good questions, but it resulted in a unanimous vote of the board to approve the amended site plan. What you have before you is that amended site plan, which forms the basis of our application tonight. As you mentioned, there is a substantial reduction in the paved area to the west of the building. I think it's to the west, but it's behind the building.
Yes.
They're going to replace that with natural vegetated area. That was one of Larry Duncan's recommendations, and it works out really well. They're gonna reconfigure the queuing lanes. Presently, or before the September meeting with your board, the vacuums had been located in the front of the building, and there was a question as to whether or not there was adequate space in the queuing lanes. They have relocated the vacuums. They have put the vacuum machinery inside the bays that used to exist in the rear of the building. They have closed off the bays, and they have utilized the most up-to-date, state-of-the-art, sound abatement they could for the vacuums inside the buildings. That, together with the traffic gates that you mentioned, and with the controls that they have enacted, was the basis of our presentation that night. We made a commitment when we came before you in September that we would come back to this board with something that was better than what you had seen there in the past. I believe we fulfilled that commitment. The gentlemen that have been with me from the beginning, Ryan Roberts and Richard Smith... Mr. Smith is a vice president of Nuria and Golden Nozzle, and Ryan is the local manager of the site here in Milford. They're here to answer any questions you may have, but in all candor, I'm here tonight to tell you that we made a commitment to you in September, and we believe we fulfilled that commitment. The planning board believed we fulfilled that commitment, and we're here tonight looking to, A, answer any questions you have, and we're hoping that we'll get a favorable vote from you tonight.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'll turn it over to board members with any questions. I have... I'll have one. I have one question. On the plan, it doesn't show where the engines for the vacuums inside the building will be located. Do we have an idea where those are going?
Yes.
At all?
Yes.
We do?
We do.
Ryan, you wanna show 'em? Because you know the technical stuff better than I. Just so we've got a location.
Yeah, sure. Yep. Absolutely.
These used to be bays, if you remember, in the back here.
Yes.
So we're gonna most likely put the vacuum right here, inside of the building.
Is it one big giant motorized?
Right, it's one big motorized.
Square one?
Mm-hmm. Exactly.
Four by four, roughly?
Yeah, I'd say about that.
Six by six?
Six by six.
Okay.
Yeah, six by six.
And the other commitment we made that night when we were here with you is that the vacuums will be inoperable outside of normal operating hours of the car wash.
Correct.
There won't be any other noises.
The other part of the discussion that we had, and I see the speed bumps are on the... Is there also a stop sign on that corner? I know we talked about the speed bumps on the southwest side, because we only have really 16 feet from the corner of a building to the actual stone wall on 140. And I know we talked about the speed bumps, which clearly will reduce the traffic, but that... On that corner is where the exit door is for the vacuum station, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any way we can fit a stop sign coming at that location?
Yeah.
I'm sure, yeah. Just so that they're aware, try to stop as a car's exiting.
They have one. They have a sign.
Says opposed speed bumps and sign stop. Okay, I see. Yeah, they put it there. So the other question I have on the motor... And again, sometimes during the day, these garage doors are open.
They're gonna be sealed.
And there's also... There's also the exit door is always open, correct, on the car wash?
The exit door?
Yeah, but the exit door of the car wash is a separate building from the base.
Correct.
It's walled off.
There's a wall.
Oh, there's a wall. Oh, that's right. I remember that.
And just so we know, the garage door for the bays, they're gone, right? They're not...
No, they're still there. They're still there.
Are you proposing to leave them there and seal them, or how are we gonna close them off?
We'll do whatever you wanna do.
If you seal them off, that means you're gonna have to concrete block that whole thing.
Okay.
So I don't wanna cripple them to the point they can't get a piece of heavy equipment to it if they need to.
How about if we seal the door where the vacuum's gonna be? The rest of the doors, we just...
Yeah, so there's... How many doors are on that side? Three?
I think it's about five.
Yeah, there's five. There were a lot.
Yeah, okay. Where the vacuum is?
Yeah, we'll seal that one.
Yeah. That makes sense.
Mark, do you remember, was that the original Chryslerville building? What was that?
Sherman's.
Sherman Pontiac. Right. Okay.
I was a little boy skating on that pond, so you're talking...
Yeah.
My parents skated on that pond. Hundred years ago.
So I have a question. Where are you proposing the vacuum inside the building? Your parking spaces, there's a couple of parking spaces there that are gonna be in front of that current door, correct?
Right.
For vacuum, for vacuum. So we're sealing, we're gonna concrete block that up. You'll match the paint to the building to take care of that issue. My only concern's gonna be, when you have cars that pull up and someone hits a gas pedal, they can go right through one of those garage doors. My suggestion would be that you put concrete stanchions somewhere in that area so that someone doesn't accidentally hit the gas when they're pulling in.
We talking about pole stanchions, or are you talking...
Was it a baller in?
Even if you wanna do a couple of four-by-fours...
Concrete?
And, you know, just like a fence-type thing? Whatever will just prevent someone from accidentally going through the building.
Yeah.
Because if someone goes through the building and someone's there, someone's gonna get hurt. So now I have to make another note. Guys are really killing me.
He's really in here working.
The only time people are gonna be in that back of the building...
There shouldn't be people...
There's not gonna be anybody in there.
Shouldn't be anybody in there.
There's a wall between...
That time's limited.
Storage.
Storage, yes.
There could conceivably be someone going in to get something, so...
Yeah. I just don't wanna cripple them in case they have an equipment breakdown and need the overhead door to get a heavy piece of equipment in.
I think one baller.
But then again, the problem with the ballers are that if they have to get a heavy piece of equipment in to replace an existing vacuum, they won't be able to get access. So that's what I'm saying, is if they did a couple of four-by-fours and just a bolted two-by-eight guardrail, they can unbolt and then get a piece of heavy equipment in. That may help.
That's acceptable, sure.
Okay, let's talk about the electronic gates. Are these motion gates, or are they manually, or are they push-button? Can someone tell me about the gates on the queuing?
Sure, yeah. So they're automated gates, and they are controlled by basically a, it looks like an ATM machine, those kind of thing that you pull up to and you pay. Once the customer pays, it goes...
Oh, it goes up and the car goes through?
Correct.
And then it comes back down?
Exactly.
All right, so you're automating everything. This is all new technology you're using?
Correct.
Okay, great. Okay.
Most of our customers have passes, they have fast passes, and those have automated readers in them, and the system reads the pass and...
Okay.
It controls traffic, of course, too. Two gates can't be opened at once.
What about your customers that have it on the windshield?
Yeah, that's automated.
That will read it?
It'll automatically read it wirelessly.
Okay.
Good.
And I know we talked about trucks trying to make that turn into the garage, but...
Yeah, that's...
That actually came up the night we were at the planning board, and the consensus between Mr. Caligione and Larry was that there was probably sufficient area for the state-of-the-art kind of truck that would be going through the car wash line, as opposed to, you know, the big long ones. Because it did come up.
Yeah.
We have car washes with a tie deterrent, but I will tell you, if somebody goes with a long extended truck, they're gonna have to...
They're gonna have to maneuver.
Yeah. When they come to... When they're in the queue, doubled in the queue, one obviously goes at a time.
Yes.
But as they go, are they gonna be... They gonna make that turn? Are they gonna be so close where they gotta make a shot? Because I have a truck, and it is tough.
No. With a machine, it's no problem at all. You're gonna drive.
So one car at a time is gonna make the long turn?
Right, yeah, exactly. They'll be set back.
And that'll keep the... And the gate will dictate who's going through.
Yes, and leave enough room at the mouth of the opening.
Go on the outer lane.
Yes, John. Okay. Just got my license, and I'm learning new things every day.
Now you've had your license a long time.
So I'm looking at the cross-section for the dumpster, and then I'm looking at the cross-section on the plan for the gates. And it looks like you're running steel tubing for the gate aspects, and you're utilizing pressure-treated wood? Five-by-five treated posts, is that correct?
For the... Was that what?
This is for your gates. For your poles, for your gates. You wanna take a...
So they get... So what happens? Do they get mounted to a cement pad?
Yep.
Those get mounted directly onto a cement pad, the machine that...
Yeah. Wait a minute. This could be just the continued dumpster one.
Yeah, that's just all the dumpster enclosure.
Yep.
We're not showing a cut sheet of this.
Yeah, we're not, yeah. I don't have it. There's no cut sheet. Do you have a cut sheet plan that you can provide the building department for your gates?
We don't yet, but we can get it.
Yeah, would you do that, just so that they've got it, so that they know the fire department shows up? They need to have some type of mechanism of what's there, just so that they're aware of it. Okay. Any other comments or questions? You have any comments or questions?
No, I'm good right now.
Okay, so I'm gonna aloud kind of follow some conditions.
We have some...
Oh, I'm sorry. Does someone wanna speak?
I might have some questions. I'm Barbara Duttco, I'm a Vine Street resident.
I'm sorry, can you say your name again?
Barbara Duttco.
Okay.
I'm on Vine Street. Are you going to be relocating the vacuums, or have they moved already?
They're gonna be relocated.
Okay, because I thought there was talk about having to shut them off, and they're still being used where they are.
Oh, no, that's... No, all those vacuums are leaving. The vacuums are gonna be on the other side of the building.
I feel bad for the people who live back there, but that'll help me. My only other concern is, I don't know if it's part of the car wash or part of something the town decided to do to Green Street. There's a piece of curbing that's been built into the road just as you approach 140 on the right. I'm surprised to where snowplows don't hit that in the winter time, but I think if you took that out, it would give a little more passing space on Green Street for people who wanna take a right and go up the hill, and for those coming off of...
That's our state. That's state.
That's a state.
Well, I don't know why they did that, because it's just, it restricts the flow of traffic onto Green Street. It makes it very difficult to make that turn there.
When they did that whole 140 intersection up there with the hospital, that's all the Department of Transportation through the state.
So there's no way to undo that?
We can't undo it.
I think that would help alleviate some of the congestion that's in that area, too.
That's state.
It's not within our board.
That's all state.
I don't have any jurisdiction on that, but...
The other thing is, I don't know if they can do anything that... But there's a lot of water where people leave the car wash that settles coming out on Green Street, which I think is very why the presence icing there. Is there anything that can be done about that?
They have to salt.
Yeah, we have to salt, because that's excess water that drips off the bottom of the car sometimes.
Every car wash has that same situation.
Are you salting there?
Yes.
Okay.
If you have a given issue, you can... You receive that it's unsalted, please call us.
Yeah, we're gonna have... We have their current contact information during business hours, and then we also have contact information for the person for weekends and night. So the building department will have direct contact with them in case any issues come up that we need to address.
The other thing, too, was, not quite at the end of Vine Street, but a little closer to me towards 140, there's been a bucket truck that parks every now and then there. Is that part of what's going on with you, or is that the town parking machinery?
A bucket truck?
Yeah.
Parking where? On Green Street?
No. It's on... Yes, it's on Green Street. It's been pulling in just beyond Vine Street and was parked there for a couple days. It's gone now. But we have a lot of machinery that comes through. We used to have car trailers come through. I don't know if they were from the car dealership, but sometimes they park there, and it's overnight. And I don't understand if that's the...
Could be someone that lives in one of the houses there?
Call the zoning inspector.
I'm sorry?
Because they're allowed to park. It's street parking, so you can...
No, no, no. This is like they're pulled into the woods. This bucket truck was just like pulled into the woods there. Yeah.
Across from the car wash?
No, on the side of the car wash, just before the car wash.
With the apartment complexes?
No, after the apartment complex. It's the apartment complex pond, and then there's this little piece of...
There's a little bit of switch here.
...wooded area, and it kind of...
Is that the side street that goes up?
No, there's no side street there. It's kind of the back end of my property, almost, and you're saying, what is that, you know? Is she...
I think if you get ahold of the chief of the Milford Police Department...
Yeah, contact Robbie.
Robbie will absolutely address it.
I just thought maybe they were starting construction, and I didn't know that.
No. No, it has nothing to do with the car wash.
Okay. I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
The discharge of the car wash is the same bay door?
You mean leaving one... Yep.
And the... It looks like you have designated parking spots for employees.
I'm sorry, can you announce your name?
Matthew Bouchard, Green Street resident.
Which street?
Green.
Green Street? Okay.
It looks like there's additional parking being put in either floor for employee parking.
Those spaces have always been there, part of the original plan.
So is the plan to have the customer do the car wash, the speed, and use you park there to dry their vehicles off, or will that be blocked off from employees, and they will most likely pull into Green Street and park?
No, that's employee parking for the employees.
Is it designated?
That's gonna be designated, that's what they have.
So customers cannot park there?
Well, trust me when I tell... How many employees you actually have there during the day?
Two.
Two.
Some people will pull out and just dry their car off there.
Yeah, and Melissa will pull in front of my house and cause issues with traffic right at that corner, so I'm just curious if...
Pull in front of your house to dry their car?
Oh, correct.
Really?
Oh, yes. All the time. They pull out and they just pull over to the side. Or my front yard, either one, yeah. So that's designated for employees, or can customers...
You talking when you come out of the car wash, in the space where they dry off their cars?
Correct.
That's gonna still be there.
But he's saying they get on the road.
I know what he's saying, but he's asking if these spaces are still gonna be there.
All right, so let me ask you a question, and I'm just trying to play devil's...
Guys are gonna get some salt.
If I pull up on the street and I decide that I wanna wash and clean my windows, that's not against the law.
Correct.
So I don't think it's against the law for someone to pull on the side of the street and wipe it down. But they shouldn't be pulling on any lawns.
Correct.
Or onto private property.
And that stuff really should be done on the site.
Right. The question is, is that going to be reserved for employees, or is it...
That's on the plan, correct. So there's only two employees. And sometimes an employee will probably could park in the back, if necessary. Where do they park now?
They park like on the back of the build when you pull around to wash the car.
Yep.
They park on the back of the property.
Okay.
So can we just...
Just wait if you need to.
Does it make sense to put the employee back there?
Put them in the back, yeah. Yeah, let's move. Why don't we leave these four spaces for clients to dry their cars off? That'll make it simple, and we'll reserve a couple of spaces in the back. Not where the vacuums are.
By signage?
Yeah. We'll make signs. Just do a couple of posts, employee parking.
Yeah.
That's fine.
To mitigate the amount of water that turns into ice on that street. Because you guys do a good job salting your property.
Thank you, yeah.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Pull into Creed Street and dry their cars?
I can't. I'm too old, I can't figure that out at all, but I believe him if he says it's happening.
I believe it. I believe... I believe it, eh?
Can you... I'm gonna, again, I know you'll probably see about eight or 10 conditions here, but where that four spaces are in front, I'd like to get that marked for customer parking, just so that if they come out, they can dry their car there, keep them away from someone's yard or what have you.
Yeah, no problem.
I'm actually starting to wonder how many people don't even know they can park there to dry their cars.
Right.
I'm wondering whether you could put all the signs up.
Only give them credit and go park in front of this guy's house.
Say one thing, if the only issue is if we make that a drying area, it could walk up the car wash.
Yeah, I agree, yeah. Yeah, I wouldn't even say...
It hasn't. I would just leave it parking.
I would just leave it as parking.
Yeah, parking, yeah, fine.
Because I'm... Part of this is gonna be that everything's gonna have to be restripped.
I don't think you put any signage.
I've never seen more than two cars or three.
Yeah, I've never seen where the cars live.
They're all the time. I've never seen more than two cars.
Okay. All right, so I'm gonna push this out, and we can certainly have discussions about it.
Anybody else in the audience?
Well, as you say, you're gonna push this out.
I'm gonna start... I'm gonna outline some proposed decisions. So you're gonna have to pull this off the recording, because I'll be here all night here all night writing. So let me take a stab at these conditions. Condition one, which is, which is nothing to do with the parking, but the town of Milford has got a new sign bylaw, specifically when it comes to sites, commercial signage. You already have a sign that is pre-existing anyways, but it also.
Need this anymore?
No, it is fine. But the new bylaw also says that the windows cannot be more than one-third covered with signage. So my suggestion's gonna be touch base with Larry Duncan, he'll go over the signage stuff just so that you won't be in violation of anything that you do, okay?
But there's no pre-existing?
Their, their big signs are already pre-existing.
No, but the window signage, if people already have it, they have to, in the town.
Well, again, this is, this is a new application. This is not.
Sorry, yep.
It's, it's, it's not from the old application.
No, I, I understand it's a new application, but it's, it's an existing business, their applications.
This isn't new license they're being issued.
Okay.
And, and your condition, if I understand it, Mr. Chairman, is you want us to talk to the town planner?
Just to go by the sign bylaws, only because.
Going forward.
Yep. Just so that there's, there's not gonna be any concerns or issues of complaint. So that would be the first condition, follow the sign bylaws and also for the windows sign bylaws. Number two, the two speed bumps that are on the plan, we will utilize along with the stop sign at the southwest corner. In addition to that, those need to be continually maintained. Number three.
Excuse me, again, I just want to be clear, you're talking about the southwest corner of the building, correct?
Correct. It's on the plan.
Yeah.
It shows the speed bumps and it shows where the stop sign location's gonna be on the corner.
Yeah.
And that's coming away and, after the vacuums from the rear of the building. Eight vacuum stations will be relocated to the back from its current condition in the front. Those, all the motors will be installed, and I will put that in the probably northwest corner inside the building. And as far as, is there installation or any of that stuff that, some, some type of soundproofing?
Yeah.
That you can do?
Ryan knows all that.
We can, we can have a soundproof board put inside of the vacuum area.
Just so that it muffles the, the sounds, because all the doors should be closed, and really if the doors aren't open, all that sound's inside the building and it's not, it's not going outside.
Okay.
If we have an issue that it's not working, the condition will be that we'll continue to monitor it and make improvements if need be.
Yeah, true, okay.
Okay? Alright.
Well, can I ask a question?
Sure.
How is that gonna be determined?
Noise complaints.
Is there a?
That's, that's a pretty.
No.
There is a decibel.
There was, there was vacuums a long time ago in the rear of that building that were closer to the neighborhoods.
They were.
On Green Street, and that was awful.
Yeah.
These here are gonna be like the ones in the front, but the motor and the engine and sound will be in the building. And they will soundproof that area in the building, so that should help a lot versus versus.
Inoperable outside of. You'll hear suction noise, but you won't hear the motors.
Yeah, I, I think that, and again, I don't mean to question everything, but I think that's a pretty open-ended, you know, it's interpretation of who can accept what sound.
There's a decibel.
I was gonna ask, what is the decibel line?
I don't know.
Requirements.
I don't know.
There is a decibel ordinance, I just don't know what it is.
I don't either.
Well, if there's a decibel ordinance, they'll try and, and match that the best that they can.
I think that's how we gotta say it, as long as they're within.
Yeah.
I'm not aware of it.
It's in Milford?
I didn't.
Oh, wow, I didn't know that. I just don't know what it is. It was something that was put in not that long ago because of, I forget how we.
Is it in the zoning bylaw?
Is it in the zoning bylaw or is it a separate bylaw? I think it's a separate bylaw.
Okay.
Didn't we deal with that once way back, David, with the, the construction companies?
I don't know.
I, I think we need to write it that way. If there is, I apologize, I didn't know there was a one in Milford, but.
I just remember it.
They have to maintain within whatever the decibel reading is.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
If we're gonna go to Larry about the signs in the windows.
Let's check the decibel.
Check that as well.
Alright.
I forget the actual reason why they.
Okay, the next one. The traffic control gates to be installed. If there's any pressure, there's no pressure-treated wood on the gates, correct?
No.
Okay, then that, that's okay. Those, of course, will have to be installed and maintained in, as well as the queuing and signage for the, the queuing and markings for the queuing lanes. So the entire site will have to be relined with the parking spaces, including the front, the travel lanes and queuing lanes, and the rear, and those need to be maintained on an annual basis. So if they wear out, they've gotta be updated. The excess paving in the rear, it's nice to see that the, the impervious material is being reduced because it's, there's an awful lot of asphalt on that site, and it looks to me like you are eliminating one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13 spaces, and it goes to one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight spaces. So that's a good improvement, and then you've got the eight vacuum stations. So the overall is much better on the plan, for sure. In addition to that, the dumpster, enclosed dumpster location, that is being updated, and that also needs to be maintained in the same condition moving forward as well. And we've got the same condition concerning the notification. So during business hours, we have a contact person that the building inspector or zoning officer or myself or town council can reach out in business hours, and then after hours, we need a phone number, not a recording, but a real person that can, that can actually communicate with, including weekends. So that condition is also there. The soundproofing, okay, I covered that.
What are, are we, what are the business hours?
The business hours currently, we've got you, the temporary. They have it here, they have it here. Operating hours, 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM Monday through Saturday, and 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Sundays. Those operating hours will stay the same.
Okay.
So that means that the vacuums at those times need to be off and not turned on before these hours and make sure they're off after those hours. How long do you think you need to get these modifications done?
I was gonna bring that up because we haven't ordered anything yet.
It takes time, yeah.
We gotta make sure that we get approved by this board here, and then there's an appeal period.
Well, you got a 20-day appeal period from the decision.
Right, so we wanted to wait until they had to.
Until after the 20-day appeal period.
So those, those, those gates and that equipment that we order usually takes about six to eight weeks to get in.
Yeah, okay.
And then we got a schedule to put it in.
So we, we can think somewhere in that February, March timeframe?
March, we're probably.
They, they won't be a little line stripe.
Yeah.
March they will.
No, not really.
Well, what, well.
Whatever, but we'll get it done.
Yeah.
I, I think we, we do like May 15th, that everything has to be compliant. Give them some time and, again.
Yeah, that'd be fair, because that'd be the paving, because when we dig up the paving and we can't get paving.
Are you paving the entire lot?
No, but we, 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 we'll be, terrorists potted up and we paved about three.
They'd have to bring power out here and.
Yeah, you gotta, you got a lot of work.
Plantings to do in the back too.
I think May 15th.
You got plantings.
We'll sure we get it done by then. We, we wanna get it done as soon as possible, exactly.
Okay.
And I'm sure the neighbors will love it.
Yeah, so, so just as a reminder, let's get to Larry Dunking on, on the signage issue and see if we've got a decimal issue from noise. My, my biggest concern is do the best you can to try and get the soundproofing of this, of this motor for the vacuums, because, you know, clearly, clearly we want to keep that noise away from the residents, and I'm glad it's in the building, because that certainly helps a lot.
And are we shutting the existing vacuums off when you close?
Yes, today, yeah.
Yeah.
There we go.
Yeah.
And I'm sure, about us, you're much better with that?
Oh, much better with the proposed, absolutely. I did have one question, and I apologize for just kinda spark. The signage for the music, I'm on 1034 Green Street, I'm right across, I'm at the hub of that. The signs that are there, they're never enforced, I'm usually the one going over asking to have everyone turn the music down. Are the signs for music gonna be put back and will they actually be enforced, like there's some, some degree?
Yeah, we put them on every post.
Yeah, and then no one listens to it and nobody.
Signs for what? Music.
What music?
Don't turn music, turn your music off.
The vacuums of the cars.
Oh, oh. Yeah, you can. And some of these guys should be shutting, shutting the engines off too.
Yeah.
God.
We've had a few issues with them, our employees being attacked by customers, so.
Oh, I, I hardly say attacked.
What you're saying, I mean, get.
They get confrontations and.
From customers.
Yeah, so, so I'd, I'd like, I'd like to be able to, if you can, when you get your signage designed and you have the signage where no radios on and, or.
Do we have that?
Send, send it, send it over, you wanna make sure that you've got it in a different language as well, because some people don't read English, as we know. So I think that's important that it goes, it's in Spanish or Portuguese or whatever the major language should be, so at least that people understand that.
What language you want us to?
Yeah, you better tell us.
Yeah.
You, you better specify what you think.
Every time we go over with no habla ingles.
I think.